Call this meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. So first, we have honored elected officials from Brandon and Lisa and Judge Vanderborne. And they have what they call the Good Deeds Program, which I've been briefed on, and I understand it's an amazing thing. So folks around, thank you.
Good morning, everyone. First of all, for all of you listening, I just want to let you know that if you're a Fairfield County resident, you should have your deed within your packet. So that will be something that you can refer to, a little later in the program. But what is Good Deeds? This is a program that's been developed around the state to better prepare you to a probate court. What we hope to accomplish is to help you be better prepared to locate and identify what type of property deed you have, to understand how to proceed with that deed with respect to what your future goals are, to designate beneficiaries on title vehicles and votes, and how they are going to go into survivorship. So let's start this program by turning things over to Judge Terry Vanderborne.
Good morning. I was told to talk close to the microphone because I'm short, and I guess I'm really quiet and people can't hear me. So that's me. What we're going to do in our presentations with the public, you're going to kind of see our PowerPoint that we're developing that we will be taking out in the community. So one thing about probate court is I'm actually two courts, and I know everyone in this room pretty much knows that. I'm a probate court and a juvenile court, but our public doesn't know that. So we're going to be explaining that to them as we go through our presentation. And in juvenile court, we have types of cases, which would be delinquency, where a youth has committed an offense. We have truancy, which is what we're all working to make be a community problem that we address. I have abuse, neglect, and dependency, which we work with Child Protective Services on, where youth are facing abuse, neglect, or dependency. Juvenile traffic, we have a lot of parents in here, you may or may not have been, myself have had a juvenile in my household, in juvenile traffic court. That's a place a lot of us end up, where we see a lot of good kids that make dumb mistakes. Adult criminal non-support is where we're supporting Child Support Enforcement Agency in collecting those funds due to families. So what do we see in probate court? The structure, we have estates, we do about 600 per year. We have guardianships, and we have 100 new guardianships a year. That's where someone needs guided decision-making, and 100 come in. We hold 700, so 700 are ongoing, stay with the court for monitoring, filing reports, things like that. We do about 50 adoptions a year. We do about 100 name changes a year. We also do civil commitments, where individuals are mentally ill, subject to a court order, and need hospitalization or court-ordered medication treatment. Then there's other crazy things that come up. Probate court is sort of the dumping ground for weird things, such as sewer issues, water issues. I appoint a lot of board members and things like that. So let's talk about the part I have in Good Deeds, which is how estates run through probate court. We have three main types of estates that we see. We call one summary releases, another is release from administration, and then our full administration. These are going to vary from simple to very complex, depending on the amount of court costs, the complexity, the need for an attorney, which really is driven by the assets, the type of assets, is there a corporation in the family, the amount of paperwork required, and the average length of time from start to finish of an estate. So how do we know? First, we're looking at summary release. The eligibility for summary release, which is the fact it's in and out, easiest option, is that the surviving spouse is entitled to all the assets, and the assets are $40,000 or less, or the applicant paid the funeral bill, the funeral bill is less than $5,000, and the assets are less than the funeral bill. Under those, you then come in on a summary release, the court cost is $139, and you're in and out within a week. That is your summary release. You then have the next step up is a release from administration. The eligibility is assets are less than $100,000, and the surviving spouse is entitled to all the assets, or assets are less than $35,000, and there is no surviving spouse. Under that scenario, your court costs are $169 without a will, $189 with a will, and the length of time, start to finish, on a release from administration is 30 to 60 days. So a full estate administration is all of the other estates that are too large to qualify for the other two categories. Their court costs are $199 without a will and $229 with a will, and the length of time is six to 12 months, and sometimes it can be longer when they are disputed, when they are very complex. So what do we want people to know about Good Deeds and how it relates to probate court? Is that planning is so critical, looking forward, planning now for less work for our loved ones down the road. We also need to know that as our situations change, you need to update your plan, and you need to consider your need for legal counsel. So throughout, as we work as a team here on the Good Deeds, we give a lot of deference to the fact that it is always encouraged that everyone consult with an estate planning expert when dealing with these issues. And we also want people to consider stocks, bonds, CDs, bank accounts, IRAs, life insurance, 401Ks, annuities, and investment accounts, because that can affect your ability to implement the plan that you are desiring to pass on to your loved ones. So with that, I will pass it on.
Thank you, Judge. Okay. I think most of you know that within the Clerk of Court's office, there are three departments. Have the legal department, and title department, and administrative fiscal department. I have three of my staff members here today, my chief deputy and my two title supervisors. Brought them along in case I'll get some questions that I can't answer, so don't be here to answer questions if you have any. So here's the structure of the Clerk of Court's office, most of you are familiar. Have three, five employees, broken between the three different departments, administrative fiscal, has four staff members, they take care of all of the incoming monies. Approximately $83 million comes through the Clerk's office every year, and the ladies in that department handle all of those monies. Legal department, which is located next door in the Hall of Justice, 18 staff members there between domestic relations division and the criminal, civil, and court of appeals division. And then the title department, 20 employees between the two offices, Pickerington and Lancaster. And then we do have a driver's exam station, which is a new addition to the title office. And have one examiner currently, and we're planning to hire a second one shortly. So if you'll take out your folder and pull up this chart, it's in the folder, we'll be working through this chart as I explain the differences, the different beneficiary designations. First off, I'm not aware, so I cannot give any legal advice, but what I can tell you is what options you have for your auto and boat titles. Judge Vanderborne talked about the probate process on real estate, and Recorder McKenzie will be talking about how you can flag your real estate deeds. But the things that sit in your driveway is what I'm going to talk about, your cars, your trucks, your motorcycles. What if you own a motorhome or a travel trailer, or a quad, or anything that has an Ohio type? You have options of the designations on those, so you can avoid the probate process. So we're going to work through this chart. First, we have the surviving spouse designation. The column on the left explains how a surviving spouse can avoid the probate process. In Ohio, the state allows the surviving spouse to transfer $65,000 worth of vehicles outside of probate. That's important, $65,000. So if you have a car that you drive every day, cars, trucks, motorcycles, those are considered primary vehicles, they can be lumped into that $65,000 value, and the surviving spouse can transfer those vehicles outside of probate once a spouse passes away. Ohio does allow for one boat and one motor to transfer to the surviving spouse, and that's outside of the $65,000 limit. So the next column, if you do not have a spouse, you have two other options. First is with rights to survivorship. You can take your auto title into the title office, and if it's titled in your surname, you can say, "I want to put my title into survivorship." And we could do that in our titleing system. But in that situation, you're actually adding an additional owner to your vehicle. You may or may not want to do that. But one example, say you and your brother or sister want to buy a motorhome together, and want to go on family vacations. So you want to buy that together, you both do want to own the vehicle. You can put that into survivorship, so both of you would be equal owners of that vehicle. And if one of you were to pass away, then that would pass automatically to the other owner outside of the probate process, regardless of the value of the vehicle. And the third option is transferred on death, commonly referred to as TOD. This is if you want to remain the sole owner of the vehicle, you're not married, you don't have a spouse, but you do want to designate a beneficiary on your vehicle. You can do that by writing in your title saying, "I want my son to get my car when I pass away." And you can put your son, or your son and daughter, on the title. We could put up to three beneficiaries on the title, and that would keep the vehicle outside of probate if something were to happen to you. The best part about all this is it's cheap, it's easy, it's 16 bucks, and all you have to do is bring your title to the title office, say, "I want to put survivorship or TOD on the title." Fast and easy, you'll in and out in five minutes, and it costs $16, and this does not go through probate. So next, I'm going to turn this over to Recorder McKenzie, and she will talk to you about real estate and deeds.
So let's talk about what the recorder does. So we're responsible for the vital records pertaining to the ownership of your real estate, land, and any liens that are upon it. When I say any means, I don't mean all, because some liens are kept with the clerk's office, and they do pertain to your real estate. Without the work of the county recorder, recording, safekeeping, and organizing all documents in a logical manner, it would be impossible to purchase land and be assured of a clear title to lend money with land as your security. So your deed, you should have your original deed. Some folks can't find it. You can always find a copy from the recorder's office. Typically, deeds are sent in your title packet from the title company or attorney that does your closing. A little different than a car title, you get your deed upfront, not when you pay off your mortgage. A deed represents your land and any permanent building on that land. Copies. They're available on our website back to August of '96. We are working diligently to try to get those dated back a little further to make it more accessible. Prior to '96, though, those are available in our records room in the recorder's office. But if you need to obtain a copy, you can come to the office, call a staff member, or send us an email, and we would be happy to assist you in providing those documents. Things are not in order, sorry. First of all, just to let you know, there are scammers out there. We talked about this several years ago, when we were getting letters from folks saying, "Send us $89, send us $99, we'll get you a copy of your deed." It's very difficult to go to your local recorder's office and obtain that. Parking is terrible, they're going to charge you a fee, and that is totally untrue. We will provide you that free, and paying someone to do that job for you is just absurd. Also, both survivorship and transfer on death deeds are the types of documents that can keep your most valuable asset, your property, out of probate court, but some of you folks also hold your property into a trust, and that is also a very valuable way to handle your estates. Just make sure that if you do have a trust, you have a memo of trust or some sort of affidavit of trust on record stating who the trustees are, so that that can transfer smoothly if something does happen to you. So best practices are to have a survivorship deed when two or more people are entitled together, and someone dies.
Go back.
And if someone dies, then you can transfer that document with an affidavit of survivorship, keeps it out of the probate court, makes it a smooth transfer. The transfer on death designation affidavit, if you have a deed and you're the only person entitled, that's something you may want to consider. You can name beneficiaries, so that when you pass, those beneficiaries can take title with an affidavit of confirmation, and that keeps the property out of the probate court. You stay sole owner in that as well, where survivorship, you are a joint owner with whomever So property fraud alert, some of you have heard me talk about this. This is a free service that's offered by the recorder's office. Property fraud alert is when your name is keyed into our system, you will get a notification within 24 hours, so that you know that something has happened within your real estate. If you get that notification, contact us, we'll take a look. It may be something that is simple, as you paid off your mortgage and the lender sent in a satisfaction or release, but it also might be something as crazy as you have some vacant land out there, and someone has tried to transfer it, and you want to be on top of that. It's not an insurance policy, what it is, is a notification policy that helps get the ball moving if you need to alert the authorities. We have several pieces of information about that in your packet. There's a flyer and a question and answer. So if you need to get signed up for that, there's a QR code right on the screen here or in your packet, and you can get signed up for that. With that, we have the Good Deeds website that has been created for folks to be able to go to. You can go to that, you'll be able to click on links and see what we are offering as far as presentations we look to in the future, possibly being able to go out into the public and present to folks and help to get them all in line to help avoid the probate. And here we have all of our information, just all included in the packet.
I was just going to add that one of our goals after this initial presentation is I will be meeting with Fairfield County Bar and working with them. Part of this program is that there are attorneys that are willing to do these deed changes for a set amount. So you get a voucher in the folder that for an amount, for example, Delaware is $125, that these attorneys on this list agreed to help you with that deed change, and it would be at the set amount. So once we've made this presentation, we will be meeting with the bar, working with them to establish that list, who will do it, what the amount will be. That is upcoming. Thank you.
Few initial documents in your folder. Judge Vanderborne provided this. Personal records and court documents page. This is really great. Fill this out, put this in your safe deposit box or in a fireproof box, give this to a family member. This is very important. God forbid something happened, but this is all of your information, if something were to happen to you, that you can keep in a safe place. Title, passports, information, we are doing photographs at the title offices now, in addition to the passports. All the information about passport services that we provide is in this voucher. And then the other one, it's a lot of words, and this one is very wordy, but it does talk about all the different scenarios of a title and what you need to bring into the office if you need to have a title transferred. So with that, are there any questions?
Good things. No, appreciate the presentation. Perfect. See how it turns out. Yeah, so obviously you guys have put a ton of work into this, so thank you for that. I'm wondering what prompted this first, and great that you're presenting us, that we're three old guys, but how are you getting that out to the general public?
Sure. So this presentation, I believe, started in Geoghan County, and Geoghan and Lake County did like a joint presentation. This has probably been five or so years ago. The clerk and the recorder and the judge in those two counties hosted, there are individual associations up there for kind of a large presentation, to kind of say, "This is how we did this. This is kind of the behind-the-scenes look." And then other counties started doing this, and Delaware County was the next. So my chief deputy a few years ago, and I drove up to, and Lisa actually came up, they hosted another meeting for recorders, clerks, and probate judges, and kind of saw that presentation. Then we drove to Delaware to one of their high schools, and they did an evening presentation for the community in, I think it was Olentown, Orange High School. And they had, basically, this presentation a little more in-depth to kind of explain the differences of the offices. And then out in the cafeteria area, they had the different attorneys that were willing to provide a deed for a flat deed, so they kind of have their table set up, with like their tablecloth and all their little tchotchke items for their law firm. And, you know, so the agreement is, you know, if we put the attorney's name on our pamphlet or on our information that we pass out, you know, they're willing to do that, but that is it. Any other legal services that the attorney provides, that is up to the attorney and the individual to enter into that type of negotiation. But they said that, you know, there was quite a large turnout at that event, and attorneys did pick up some legal work, in addition to, you know, preparing the will or preparing the deed or something like that. This is our first presentation, and we've kind of been talking about this for a while, so this is the first presentation, so we look to be sharing this with the community.
It's really proactive. I think it's great.
You know, I would look at this, what you are all going, is going forward above what your job description is, and actually serving the public. So congratulations on what you're doing. That's right.
Okay, thank you.
So we have with us today Attorney Jeff Naco, and he is here for an annexation, I believe. And so we'll give you the opportunity to talk about that, so you don't have to stay for the whole meeting.
You know, attorneys, time's money, right?
Absolutely. This is a real, it's a real case I speak from the--
Absolutely. You can come down, this will carry you better.
Sure. Absolutely.
What the president is doing here, as you probably know, are go through this review meeting, and then we'll have a voting pattern, but sometimes if we recognize someone special is here or something, you're welcome to stay the whole time. This is an opportunity--
Thank you. Thank you. So this is a real straightforward annexation petition. It was requested by Jim Keller and his family. There are three Keller family members who own this tract of land, which is a little over 83 acres, currently in Liberty Township. It's adjacent to, contiguous to the Village of Baltimore Corporation, on the north side of the village. And so the Keller family contacted the village and said, "We don't have any immediate development plans. We've been contacted by some potential developers, but there's nothing concrete. We would like to annex into the Village of Baltimore in order to obtain utility services of sewer and water, and then to take advantage of all of the other services that the village may offer, as far as zoning goes, and code enforcement and that sort of thing." And Village Council was receptive to that, and they passed a services resolution that said, "We welcome the opportunity to use annex into our municipality. Here are the services we can provide you." And that's what brings us here to that. So that's essentially it. I'm not sure, I'll be happy to answer any specific questions, but that's all I have on this.
I think Joe Keller wouldn't buy a permit before he decided to retire, I felt, so--
Yeah, and a really good attorney. And I was kind of disappointed to see him retired, but as far as, I know he's enjoying retiring.
Couple things on my-- Which township you coming out of? The-- Okay. And then by Commissioner Gladys, I have a historical relationship with Keller's, but it is historical, it's not current. That's a--
Sure. So, and you know, as with any annexation, sometimes the rumor mill kind of runs wild, and so people think, "Oh, wow, here we go, huge residential development going in," that sort of thing. But again, according to the Keller family, no immediate plans to do anything. Part of this parcel is already zoned for commercial purposes in the township, and the family desires to keep that zoning designation, so for future growth. So it sits at the intersection of State Route 158, Bigwood Church Road. So I appreciate your time, and thanks for--
Thanks for being here, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
So the commission sets aside this time, Mr. President, if I might still on that point.
This is practically expedited, those are the ones where, and I'll say it my way, and you can say yours, the face bear, Andrew Dykes.
That one's pretty much a pretty good scam.
Thank you.
So the commission sets aside this time for public comment. If you wish to do so, please approach the voting and give your name and address. You are limited to three minutes.
My name is Ray Steeman, and I've changed my address completely, but not out of Lancaster area. But my address now is 1481 Wesley Way, Apartment 222, Lancaster, Ohio, 43130. So you know that's assisted living because of circumstances that I've gone through in the last four months. It hasn't been pleasant, but it's been learning and humbling. So with that thought, I would like to share with you the prayer that I want for you, everyone in this audience. Lord, be with the people in this room. They're the ones that make decisions that affect all of us. Give them special insight, and may they ask for that insight, too. You are in charge, and much as we don't like to do some of the things you want us to do, but Lord, you know the best. So right at this time, I come before you in the name of Jesus, thanking you for my life and the joys that I've had with our wife in the past, and I thank you for watching over everyone here. Help us, Lord, make the right decisions in your name. Amen.
I would like to be next.
Hello, Commissioner, this is Joshua Horosek. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce my son Lincoln Horosek, his friend Luke Lott. They are boy scouts working on their citizenship in the community merit badge, so they're here observing a public meeting of local government, so just wanted-- They're hiding in the back. But--
He's getting them to say the vote and tell us a little bit about themselves.
Probably very little, but would you like--
I'm saying-- I don't think-- It's part of the citizenship, I think.
They already did their communication, they're saying, "Well, public speaking." Apparently, they're not--
I thought I'd take my shot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Who would like to be next? Anyone? Thank you all for coming.
All right, anything on legal? How the administration update, Jeff?
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, next week, well, the weekend review, we wanted to just recap what was from information provided at last week's meeting regarding the state and the county address, which will be held on August twenty-seventh. Registration for that event begins at eleven AM. Parking will be tight. May encourage people to carpool. The event will be running from eleven thirty to one, and right now the event is sold out. Um, but you can contact the Lancaster Fairfield Chamber of Commerce being placed on the waiting list. So, um, wanted to provide that information. Uh, for highlights of resolutions, uh, there are administrative approvals. The list is contained within the packet. And, uh, for this meeting, there are twenty-two resolutions on the agenda, one being the, uh, Type Two Expedited Annexation of Eighty-Three, uh, plus or minus acres from Liberty Township to the Village of Baltimore that was discussed by Attorney Faco. Um, we also have a resolution to appropriate funds for telecom services for transit. Um, Director Zabrack, if he's not with us today, otherwise he could give us a bit of an update for that. Uh, many, uh, departments and agencies have submitted, uh, financial resolutions which are on the agenda. And we also have a resolution, uh, from regional planning for the final acceptance of the public improvements for the Rolling Hill subdivision. Uh, did you have anything to add to that?
I would think not.
Thank you. And then we have a resolution to sign title services agreement for the Quilling Farm, um, through the Clean Ohio Local Agricultural Eastment Purchase Program. And, um, this is through the Ohio Department of Agriculture, uh, where they acquire agricultural eastments to retain land for predominantly agricultural purposes. This is one of the first agreements that will be subject to an MOU that will allow for utility eastments across that property. Tell me, did you have anything to add to that?
This is, I guess this is on my.
Thank you. Um, now we move on to budget review. Bart?
Uh, the only budget review I have today is just reminding everybody that August twenty-eighth is the Level Three Budget Access ending date. So if you have any questions, concerns about your budgets, please go ahead and ask me, we'll do all we can to help you. Thank you.
Okay. Um, we'll now move on to the calendar review and invitations received. Shaw?
Thank you. The Lancaster Fairfield Community Action Agency Board of Directors Meeting has been canceled for August fifteenth. It was canceled yesterday afternoon. The Family and Children First Executive Committee Meeting is August sixteenth at eight thirty AM. Fairfield County has a four-H recognition event on August eighteenth at six PM at Liberty Center, and Fairfield Soil and Water Conservation District will hold their annual meeting September twelfth at five thirty PM at the Wagner Memorial Library. The volume correspondence was received, a press release from the Health Department titled "Nile Virus Found in Fairfield County." The county auditor has supplied the August eighth memo, subject modernization for Wednesday of the week, and the Wednesday Word of the Wise regarding vendor changes. Also, I'll note that the, uh, county auditor has a birthday this Friday, so happy birthday. A letter from Fairfield Homes regarding Hunter's Hill Apartments, a thank you from United Church Homes, Fairfield County Municipal Court Criminal Traffic Division Feast Collected Report for July twenty-twenty-four, correspondence regarding industrial solar projects, and the Fairfield Soil and Water Conservation District's newsletter. That is it.
Very good. Make sure Davis has any old business. Make sure, yeah, thank you. But, uh, new business. None for me. Thank you. Thank you. A date from elected officials. So, Brad, anything else you'd like to add?
I don't think so. Nothing to have a chair. Uh, just that we are, uh, looking to hire a new driver's examiner. That has been going very, very, very well. Uh, he is busy all the time, and we did have to put a notice on the website that we cannot take walk-ins right now because we are busy with, um, the scheduled appointments.
Or, or, do you have a sense of how many are prepared for other counties?
I, I don't. Um, I, I, I don't. There really wouldn't be a way for us unless we were to track that, because we do have the person's address. I mean, we could get that, it would be a lot of work, but, um, I think a lot of the people are from the East Columbus area that are driving over, because Allen Creek is one of the nearest locations. It's the largest in the state. And we're, you know, about twenty minutes away from there. So everyone goes there, they can't get in, they drive over to our office immediately thinking, oh, we could walk in. John, just, he can't do it. But it's, um, it's very busy, and having the BMV now moved next to our office is also working well. It was, you know, three, four miles down the road from the old location before their lease ended, uh, but that was a long three or four miles. So having them right next door is, is very nice because they can just go next door. So that's, that's worked out.
How's the drive for?
Drive is not open yet. Um, we're gonna be opening soon, aren't we? Um, there, we're logistics with our, with, uh, logistics with a credit card device, uh, being able to pass it through the little automatic, um, bank thing. So it's all, that's all worked out.
Um, I really don't have anything new, but thank you so much for allowing us to present today and being our guinea pigs. Um, if you have any feedback, we would appreciate that. So, when, oh, when we reach out to the public, uh, if there's anything additional that, that anyone feels we might need, um, to share, we'd be more happy to have that feedback. So, thank you.
Sure. I love the fact that you're being, you're active. There, I've been saying you're doing well, I'm not sure you got any, like that famous song.
I, I really have nothing other than, I wish my appreciation for the presentation.
I have no updates. This is as usual. I'm Brown. Happy birthday.
Thank you. Happy to be alive, live here in Fairfield County. Thank you to the, um, presentation from Lisa Brandon and Judge earlier today. I really appreciate the name of the program as well as the content of the program. Probably a good opportunity to highlight the circumstances of fraud that we're seeing in Fairfield County. Not only do we see checks that try to get pushed through, but we also see, you know, smart criminals trying to make it seem as if we're able to change a vendor and route money to incorrect location. There's quite a lot of that happening. So you'll see a lot of stepped-up procedures where we're asking for two signatures, we're asking the departments to really sign off on these changes as an additional measure of internal control. You may get emails that look exactly like they should look, but probably to the wrong person about these types of activities. We're seeing a lot of it in some other counties where hundreds of thousands of dollars are being diverted in error. So we have some good procedures in place, but just it's a good opportunity to stay vigilant, stay aware about those types of activities. Really excited about the Enterprise Resource Planning Governance. Uh, we have, often in this setting, we've talked about the importance of combining structure with creativity to result in innovation. In every rock we underturn, that's the kind of formula we're looking at. We're looking at the structure, what we could do for creativity and add innovation. And that requires a lot of stakeholders to be engaged. So I want to say thank you to everyone around the table who's been participating in the governance committee and also the assessment. Um, to that end, there's a couple of people I want to say thank you to specifically. Kristi Nolan, who works with EMA, has been helping with, uh, Major Crimes Unit. She is fabulous. She has knowledge, she's, has the ability to communicate that knowledge. I just wanted to, you know, acknowledge that here publicly because she has made a big difference in some, um, of the grant activities that seem very complex, but she's made it seem easy for a few other people. So thank you to Kristi. Also want to say thank you to the participants at the Treasurer's Office as we looked at some new things that we're going to be doing with ERP. Just that open-mindedness is very helpful. To that end, you're gonna see the memo where I wrote about modernization. The modernization activities that we're doing relate to budget commission. You'll recall that a couple of, um, years ago, we changed the budget commission process, we waived the tax budget, and made it more of a desk review process as opposed to formal hearings. Now we're adding a tool of technology that will remove antiquated ways that we are gathering information and make it more accessible for about sixty stakeholders. Thank you to the commissioners, to Jeff, to Bart, to Ani for supporting that particular project. Thank you to IT for helping with the, um, analysis so that we're able to use ARP funds for that initial implementation. Coupled with that, we have the lots application process, which REA funds are supporting, and they're very similar, very similar projects relating to modernization. In the memo, I'm predicting a couple of other resolutions that you'll see coming forward that are related to this project. None of them are additional appropriations for the general fund, but there are some changes that'll help us with that structure. Union County, uh, the state of Florida and Pennsylvania have reached out this past week to thank us for our strategic plan. They are using the templates of our strategic plan to, um, place in their particular agencies. I give caution to that because what works for your strategies may not necessarily be the exact same strategies that work for another, but it is, um, encouraging because the individual who brought forth that idea to these folks was, um, Clayton Finley, who's a new employee. And we've never sat down with Clayton and said, here's what you do with the strategic plan, but he's just experienced it within our operations, and he provided it in the NACO Leadership Conference. And then these other states and organizations have reached out and, um, are modeling these particular processes. That's encouraging to me because that means it's working well for those that are on the front line. Interesting thing about Clayton, if you did read our newsletter, he's been in the field of study of mapping since he was thirteen. He was part of his homeschooling, and he's twenty now. He's the ripe old age of twenty, but he's really taken off quite well, uh, as a new employee. We're very happy to have him. We have the new map of the month. We are up to fifty presentations for the year, and GIS is doing such excellent work with internal and external customer service. We should expect to see probably a mapping technician added back to the table organization for two thousand twenty-five. It's not a new position. It's one that we've delayed hiring for about three years. We've actually have two and a half positions fewer in a light comparison, um, five years ago, and we are probably gonna have one and a half positions fewer as we live to two thousand twenty-five.
I'd like to, uh, thank Matt Voskins. She had an assessment with the ERP. Um, and there were a lot of things that I didn't, I didn't know, but some of the things that were laid out, um, probably will save me three hours, everybody, some of the different forms proposed, and I was entering. So, I don't know, calling. Now, there's a lot of good information there.
Anthony?
Sitting in for today, Anthony Icany, Economic Development Coordinator for the county, um, state announcement for next week, next Tuesday is the parent info night at the Workforce Center. So, um, any parents wanting information on some of the different programs we have going on, that will be next Tuesday at six AM.
Same, to my team. Update for me today, either.
So, uh, you know, I'm, um, on the benefits committee with the state. I asked you for some information. I was actually with the director of JS yesterday and asked on our concerns about, you know, scam, it's low. And, uh, mentioned thinking that, I did put chips in, he said, that, so it's about a six million dollar charge, the cost of state to do that. I don't, but he, he'd like to see that down as well.
I know it's been, uh, something that's been suggested for a little while. We're actually doing the listen and learn next weekend. That's part of our presentation. It's what's going on with the scamming and fraud and for those benefit cards.
And he is very important, that's one.
So, good. Happy to hear that.
Please rise if you're able and join me in what your positions. I believe in the flag of the United States of America and in the republic for which it stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you have any announcements?
Yes, I just want to point out that our August twenty-seventh review and regular meeting will be in this room at nine AM. There have been some questions just whether or not it would be at the Free Center, but it is in this room, and then we will move out to the Liberty Center for the state county event.
Very good. Federal amendments for August sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
Some moved?
Yeah. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacey?
Yes.
Minutes passed three zero. From the Commissioners, Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Dash Eight Dot Thirteen Dot A, a resolution to approve the annexation of eighty-three point three four six plus or minus acres from Liberty Township to the Village of Baltimore, expedited Type Two Annexation pursuant to ORC seven oh nine point oh two three, Agent for Petitioner Jeffrey Faco.
The Commissioners, remove items A, B, C, D, and E.
Fair. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Court of Common Pleas, Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Dash Eight Dot Thirteen Dot F, a resolution to appropriate unappropriated matrix expenditure object category for common pleas adult probation, Fund Twenty Three Sixty Five.
Some moved?
Yeah. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey? Motion passes three zero. Fairfield County Dog Shelter, Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Dash Eight Dot Thirteen Dot G, a resolution to appropriate unappropriated matrix expenditure object category for dog shelter fund two zero zero two.
Some moved?
Yeah. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Dash Eight Dot Thirteen Dot H, a resolution to request for appropriation for additional unanticipated receipt of memo receipts and memo expenses for Fund Number Twenty Fifty, brand new inspections of various subdivisions at the seven twenty-four twenty-four.
Some moved?
Same. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Fairfield County Family and Children First Council, Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Dash Eight Dot Thirteen Dot I, a resolution to approve additional appropriations by appropriate from unappropriated to matrix expense object category, Fund Seventy Five Twenty One.
The Family, Fairfield County Family and Children First Council, remove items I and J.
Fair. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Dash Eight Dot Thirteen Dot K, a resolution approving the Fairfield County Plan for Child, Family, and Adult Community and Protective Services Expenditures.
New Job and Family Services, remove items K, L, and M.
Fair. Discussions. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Yes. Oh, I jumped again.
Commissioner Fix?
Yeah.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Fairfield County Meals on Wheels Adult, or Older Adult Agency, Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Dash Eight Dot Thirteen Dot N, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated funds in a matrix expenditure object categories for Meals on Wheels, OKA A C, Fund Number Twenty Six Seventeen.
Seven.
Same. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Dash Eight Dot Thirteen Dot O, a resolution to approve final acceptance of the Rolling Hill subdivision.
Some moved?
Same. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Dash Eight Dot Thirteen Dot P, a resolution approving an account account transfer into a matrix expenditure object category, Fund One Zero Zero.
Some moved?
Same. Discussion. Seeing that, roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. South Central Major Crimes Unit, Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Dash Eight Dot Thirteen Dot Q, a resolution operating an account account transfer for MCU Fund Seventy Eight Fifty Eight.
Some moved?
Same. Discussion. Seeing that, roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Fairfield County Soil and Water Conservation District, Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Dash Eight Dot Thirteen Dot R, a resolution to sign the title services agreement for the Quilling Farm for the Clean Ohio Local Agricultural Eastment Program, Purchase Program with the Ohio Department of Agriculture. Ohio Department of Agriculture.
Samud?
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call please.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero. From Fairfield County Transit, Resolution twenty-two-four-eight dot thirteen dot S, a resolution proving to appropriate from unappropriated to a major expense category within a major expenditure category for Grant Fund twenty-nine oh-eight for the Ohio Department of Transportation Grant.
Fairfield County Transit, move items S, T, and U.
Discussion.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero. Payment of Bills, Resolution twenty-two-four-eight dot thirteen dot B, a resolution authorizing the approval of payment of the invoices for departments that each order commissioners approve.
Samud?
Discussion.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for August twenty-ninety.
Any additional items that come before the Board of Commissioners at this time? Looking for a question to, Jared?
Second.
On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are in turn.